Go through the agenda. If, I think the clerk usually calls the roles for this, so the clerk will call the role.
Adams. Anani. Ballerin.
Here.
Clark. Pharaoh.
Conti. Ben Pharaoh. Here.
Sorry. Conti.
Here.
Ben Pharaoh.
Here.
Frederick.
Flynn's here.
Oh my gosh, hold on. Okay, let's start this over, I apologize. Adams. Anani. Ballerin. Clark. Conti. Pharaoh.
Here.
Flynn. Frederick. Howie.
Here.
Johnson. Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough. Love. Robinson. Zamer. Nine present, ten absent, also joined by Alyssa Camaro, Junior Policy Analyst, Brett Williams, Assistant Corporation Counsel, Jake Iceland, Research Counsel, and myself, Shneke Jackson, City Clerk.
Okay, we will go through the agenda. For approval of minutes from previous meetings, we have the April 21st meeting. Just a note, we will get to it, but the majority consent resolution from Councilmember Robinson, celebrating Jaden Goodby, will be taken out of order, so we'll be adding that to the agenda and moving it forward in the beginning. In ordinances, we don't have any, we're not considering local laws tonight. In ordinances held, we have ordinance 269124. Councilmember Kimbrough's ordinance on amending the street naming, I'll introduce that for him. Resolutions introduced, we have Councilmember Adams, and I just want to note the ones that I have down that were all co-sponsors. Councilmember Adams, Resolution 305125, recognizing May as Bike Month. All co-sponsors. Councilmember Howie's Resolution 315125, a resolution of the Common Council in support of protecting neighborhood social security offices, Medicare, and Medicaid. Councilmember Howie, do you want to say anything on that? Or?
I'll say it when it comes up. Thank you.
Councilmember Keegan. Councilmember Keegan's resolution on 325125, commemorating the week of May 5th through the May 9th as Public Service Recognition Week. We are all co-sponsors on that. Would you like to say anything, Councilmember Keegan?
I mean, I think it explains itself, I can wait till the meeting.
Councilmember Kimbrough's resolution, 335125, resolution of the council directing the city clerk to hire Garrett Schaaf for the Program Director position, which is CPRB. Councilmember Howie, would you do that? Councilmember Zamer, Resolution 345125, recognizing May as Jewish Heritage Month. We are all co-sponsors on that. Councilmember Flynn's resolution, 355125, resolution celebrating May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Albany. We are all co-sponsors. Councilmember Adams, Resolution 365125, commemorating May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We are all co-sponsors on that. And finally, Councilmember Keegan's, well, not finally, Councilmember Keegan's Resolution 375125R, recognizing May 1st as International Workers' Day. We are all co-sponsors on that. Reminder that we'll be taking the MC out of order, so we'll be doing that first. And then resolutions held, we have Councilmember Love's Resolution 163225, honoring the life and legacy of Winnie Mae Everett, and renaming a portion of Sheridan Avenue in her honor. That was passed through the General Services Committee on April 23rd, so we will be voting on that this evening. Any questions or anything? We have a few minutes, I would just note, the mayor came in to talk about the landfill during our last caucus. I definitely recommend councilmembers going in and watching that because she provided a lot of information. But the short story is that we are in fact, it looks like, well, they're looking, reviewing different options, it looks like the best option is for the city to build and maintain a transfer station. We potentially might build a recycling center, which could long-term bring in revenue. The landfill is still slated to close in 2028, but it could potentially stay open until 2029, depending on what materials go into it if we're able to. So, again, definitely recommend people watching that, but that was a helpful update. So does anybody have any questions or want to say anything? Councilmember Conti?
Yeah, I noticed this morning there was a swearing-in of 15 new police officers. Were we, I don't know, were we aware of the event? Yeah. Okay.
He's asking, were you maybe aware of the promotion?
I'm pretty sure we got notice, but it was a couple of weeks ago about it, but it is something I believe that we, they gave a, like, long-term heads-up. We didn't get a recent one, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's something that was sent to all councilmembers two weeks ago or so. I would have to look, but I did think that was something that we got notice of, well ahead of time, though.
It is unusual to get notices weeks in advance of, because it's usually planned very close to when it happens, but, all right.
Well, yeah, I did go to the promotion and the ceremony today, and I just do want to report as Public Safety Chair that we have 15 recruits, which is one of the largest classes we've had in a while, so let's keep our fingers crossed that we retain most or all of those 15, and there was two officers promoted to sergeant. And I think the Common Council email also sent out about, I think last week, that there was going to be this event today.
Maybe if it's something, if our staff doesn't mind checking in and making sure that Councilmember Conti is in that CC group email, because that could be...
He is, because I put him in personally.
If at least one I am, I just don't recall, maybe I've missed it, but, you know, you get a lot of emails.
Did anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up? So, we, in order to make sure, just a note, we were hoping that the CPRB director would be able to come in this evening. He is unable to, it is something that, he starts May 12th, and it's a position that they've really, really needed, so we will make sure that he comes in. This is unusual for us to not interview someone ahead of time, and I will say, don't love the precedent, but it is something that this process has been going on for almost a year to try to hire someone, and I know that they desperately need it, so I would like to also note that he is moving from Chicago, Illinois, here to Albany for the position, so I do know that he's in the process of moving here into Albany, and that's the reason why he's unable to attend this evening.
So for the record, he hasn't been interviewed in Albany yet?
He's been interviewed via Zoom.
Okay.
But not in person. Everything has taken place via Zoom.
Okay. That's, that's interesting. Okay.
All right, so if there is nothing else, we will reconvene at 7:00. Actually, Tom. Tom, do you want to say a few words? Yeah, on behalf, and that way, because there was a very rigorous interview process.
We conducted, I want to say...
We've been interviewing since early November, late October, early November, so we've been through multiple rounds of candidates.
At least eight, right?
At least eight or nine candidates, yeah.
And I think we were lucky to be able to get Garrett, our number-one choice, and I can't think of his name, he was from, I want to say Rochester.
Correct.
And he blew us all away. He was an attorney, as Garrett is, but somebody offered him more money, and he took that job, because we were a long process, and, you know, sometimes you got to act fast. But Garrett has experience, I know he worked down in Aluna, he was out in Chicago, so he, I think you will be impressed by him. And again, we had an interview with the CPRB leadership, and, you know, they had certain specifics that they wanted, and I think he really impressed them, which, which is pretty impressive in itself, so we will get him in to talk to the council, and we'll move forward from there.
I'm not sure, I know, Shneke, while you were very involved in the interview process too, did you want to say anything about him?
Garrett, with his experience with the CPRB, we definitely feel like he can bring a different perspective here to the, to the position, one with experience, and I would say two with longevity. I think, honestly, I believe that he can carry the CPRB into the direction that they needed to go, but we just need to make sure that he, obviously, he gets here, gets settled into his role, and then meet with the CPRB to move the position into, the office into the next direction.
And the CPRB has been without staff for some time, which has caused a lot of issues for the CPRB, but also for our staff, because trying to juggle all of those things, so it is a very necessary role to fill that has been deeply vetted. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Are we speaking about the role that Michelle used to?
Yes.
Yes.
So that person doesn't lead the CPRB, right?
They do, yes. The Program Director, so it's a new position, the title is a Program Director.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where I'm, I guess I'm getting confused now. All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a slightly different role than Michelle had, and this person's an attorney that was the desire of the CPRB and council to kind of move in a direction where there would be an attorney that would be head of it, that could help navigate the legal issues, but also properly advocate for the CPRB with all of the different legal pieces that come up, so.
As I was listening, I just automatically assumed that this person wouldn't be here for a long time, because coming with those qualifications, and I'm just thinking about the position as it was under Michelle's possession, I would think that that person, this would just be a stop, but now that I understand that, it's a little bit more to the position. I'm clear.
Yeah, no, thanks for asking that, because I think that is an important part, that when they shifted moving into the city, and I honestly think that they loved Michelle, and there was no desire to move Michelle, Michelle moved on to another opportunity, but in light of that position opening, they were able to move in a direction of hiring an attorney, which was a lot of what people were, a lot of what their planning had looked at, when looking at the different models, having an attorney as head of, as the Program Director, just made a lot of sense.
Thank you again.
It is now 7:00, and we'd like to call the order tonight's Omni Common Council Meeting, May 5th, 2025. Can the clerk please call the role?
Adams.
Present.
Anani. Ballerin.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Conti.
Here.
Pharaoh.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick. Howie.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough. Love.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Zamer.
Here.
Twelve present, three absent.
And will you stand with me and say and pledge allegiance, and then have a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our public comment period, because the number of people signed up, we want to make sure that everyone is getting heard, so we will, it will be four minutes this evening for your public comment period statement. Once again, you can speak on any issue you like, you come to the table, state your name, and the city you live in, you don't have to state your address, for the record, and at that time, no councilmembers can answer any of your questions to your statement. If they choose to do so, they will make a comment later on in the agenda, so with that being said, once again, you have four minutes, there'll be a green light, and then when you have one minute remaining, the yellow light will come on, and the red light means conclude your comments. So with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Patty Pierce.
Good evening, my name is Patricia Pierce, and I live in Albany. What happened to the Democrat Party? I always thought of it as being the party that protected the underdog, the people and families who struggle, especially from the corporations and institutions who may otherwise take advantage for profit or personal gain. Are you aware that the fluoride used to fluoridate public water is derived from industrial waste produced by the phosphate fertilizer industry? Putting fluoride in our drinking water sure benefits this industry, who may otherwise have to expend a lot of money to dispose of this hazard. As you know, the lawsuit against the EPA for allowing fluoridation was decided last September. The federal court ruled, after testimonies from many of the top scientists in the world, that fluoridation poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children. It ordered the EPA to take measures to eliminate this risk. Studies show that the significant IQ loss results from pregnant women drinking fluoridated water, and from their infant children consuming formula mixed with fluoridated water. An unreasonable risk, I don't know how any word wording could be more clear, and I don't know why anyone would willingly put pregnant women and their babies in harm's way by intentionally adding this neurotoxin to the water. This is especially unfair to low-income families who can't afford expensive water filters, or bottled water to avoid fluoridated water and protect their children. This is unethical. With the information you've received since you voted for fluoridation, both from scientific studies in the court, you are certainly justified in changing your minds and rejecting fluoridation now. Why do you persist in supporting the addition of this neurotoxin in our water, despite all the newest scientific studies we have provided you? Is your persistence to add this neurotoxin to our water based on a reliance of what the American Dental Association promotes? Do you know that the ADA still promotes amalgam fillings which consist of 50% mercury? One of the most toxic substances known. These fillings are inches from your brain. Even the FDA is warning against using amalgam fillings since there are so many vulnerable populations negatively impacted. Sounds like the trend is to stop amalgam fillings. Too bad the ADA is so late to the game. Speaking of trends, since the lawsuit ruled a total of 60 communities all over the country have rejected fluoridation, a few communities have voted to keep it, but how many have voted to start it for the first time like Albany? None. Zero. While the rest of the country is moving forward, Albany is poised to go backwards. Yorktown in Summers, New York, Abilene, Texas, Clearfield, Pennsylvania, Lebanon, Oregon, DeForest, Wisconsin, these are just some of the cities voting to stop it. Everyone drinks water, this is bipartisan, not a Democrat-Republican issue. And now, fueled by grassroots movements, entire states are moving in this direction. Utah is banning fluoridation starting this Wednesday, and after 24 communities in Florida have already voted it out, totaling nearly 3 million people, it is poised to be the second state. The trend is clear. Safe Water Albany again calls on the council to withdraw the fluoridation legislation and preserve our city's safe, clean water. It is a common sense thing to do, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk call the next speaker?
Alexa Bontempo. I'm Alexa Bontempo, I live in Albany. I'm here to speak about fluoride, but before I start, I just want to thank Councilmember Zamer for introducing the resolution to make May Jewish Heritage Month. You have my full support, it means a lot to me. Thank you. So, about fluoride. It appears that many of you are uninterested in the latest science, and the knowledge and acceptance that science evolves as more data is collected, studied, and analyzed. We now know the harms of lead consumption, asbestos use, opioids, mercury, tobacco, and even now, gas stoves. And now we know fluoride consumption poses health risks. Also, the latest research on cavity prevention shows minimal impact, if there is any at all, is saving maybe one-fifth of a cavity per person worth a permanent reduction in their IQ? Not in my book. Science is always changing, and new discoveries necessitate new policies. Many of you seem uninterested in the wants of your constituents, or the hardship imposed on lower-income residents who do not want to drink fluoride. It was apparent in our canvassing of hundreds of Albany residents that the vast majority do not want their water fluoridated, yet this is roundly ignored by most of you. do not want their water fluoridated, yet this is roundly ignored by most of you. You seem to feel you know better about the medical needs of your constituents. We are individuals and you do not know the individual needs of each of us, so don't rob us from making our own healthcare decisions. Many of you also seem uninterested in informed consent for a medical treatment. We know that the FDA defines fluoride as a drug. It requires a prescription. Fluoride is not a supplement, like many of you have mentioned here before, akin to vitamin D. It cannot be purchased at the health food store or the vitamin shop. It's a neurotoxin. We know so much more since February of 2024. Do you want your legacy to be lowered IQ points in Albany's children? You've been made aware that this is what the latest science shows. Will Albany hold the dubious distinction of being the last municipality in the United States to start fluoridating the water as dozens and dozens of towns, counties, and now even two states are ending fluoridation? Purify our water. Don't medicate it. Please repeal this law and thank you again for the time to speak tonight.
Tom Ellis.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Tom Ellis, I live in Albany. Count me as a supporter of the Jewish Heritage Resolution. So I imagine some of you are getting annoyed with my colleagues and me. We are annoyed too. I have heard people say that you are the best city council that Albany has ever had and you're certainly the most diverse. We noticed that many of you do not say anything about water fluoridation at these meetings and that is your right. To the few comments you make, we have replied with science, logic and common sense and we have treated you with respect. I was part of the community group that convinced your predecessors to reject water fluoridation in 1994. We know that few of you are scientists or statisticians. We believe that the American Dental Association made an enormous mistake 75 years ago when it began to promote water fluoridation based on very limited information and has ever since repeatedly doubled down despite mounting worldwide evidence of harm or possible harm. We believe the ADA has discredited itself with its refusal to admit that it made a mistake or may have made a huge mistake in 1950. We know that there are many studies with differing and contradictory results, that some studies are no good while other studies were excellently, excellently conducted. We know that science evolves and new studies can falsify prior studies. We believe that the dental profession could enhance its credibility by ending its infatuation with water fluoridation. We know that this is not an easy matter for you to grapple with. It would be much better if the state government or even better if the federal government had banned water fluoridation many decades ago when it was becoming clear that it could not be proven safe or probably safe. Mr. Howie, we know that you made a promise more than a year ago that you have so far not kept or as far as I know, discussed. The promise concerned a federal lawsuit that in progress and decided in September by Judge Edward Chen, who determined that water fluoridation presents an unreasonable risk to human health. I have, we applaud the city government for diligently working to remove lead pipes and ask why the city is determined to replace one neurotoxin with another. Mr. Zamer, Ms. Zamer, sorry. We heard you say last month that water fluoridation is not a drug or medication, thus implying that water fluoridation is not a forced medication. We provided evidence two weeks ago from the FDA in the year 2000 that water fluoridation, when intended to reduce cavity rates, is a drug or a medication. Ms. Keegan, we heard you say a month ago that you have reviewed the literature and have seen no evidence that water fluoridation at the rate that would occur in Albany, 0.7, 0.7 parts per million causes health problems. We provided you with links to eight studies showing harm or possible harm. It seems that some of you made up your mind on this issue in 2023 before you heard our side of the story. We know there are powerful and scrupulous vested, vested interests promoting water fluoridation in the United States. We know dentists who are afraid to speak out against water fluoridation due to fears of retaliation and ruined careers. We have informed you of the many alternatives to water fluoridation and we have informed you that nearly all of Europe, way more than 95%, has rejected water fluoridation, some of them for decades. We know that Utah recently banned water fluoridation. Many cities in Florida are doing the same as our municipalities elsewhere. Will Albany be the final municipality in the United States to begin water fluoridation? Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Can a clerk call next speaker?
Brian Borton.
Good evening. My name is Brian Borton. I live in Albany. In January of 1776, Thomas Paine wrote, "A long habit of not thinking a thing wrong gives it a superficial, superficial appearance of being right." Everyone sitting here this evening can probably think of a time in American history when a long-held belief regarding a practice or situation, a peculiar institution was considered acceptable or necessary, but that did not make it right. Forcing a medical treatment and anybody who does not want it is morally wrong. Adding fluoride to the municipal water is actually forced medical fluoridation and it is wrong. In 43 B.C., Cicero, the famous Roman statesman and philosopher, said, "To be ignorant of what occurred before you were born is remain always a child." I submit to this council an article from the Duluth Reader written by Gary G. Coles, M.D., in 2013, which outlines a chronology of events regarding fluoride and fluoridation from 1855 to 1952. Please read it. Albert Einstein said, "The measure of intelligence is the ability to change." We provided to the council new scientific data regarding the harmful effects of water fluoridation on various segments of the population and also provided data proving its ineffectiveness as a dental treatment. In conclusion, we are now on the cusp of the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, a time when we should be celebrating our inalienable rights. We should not be eroding our hard-won freedoms and liberties, rather we should be working hard to safeguard them. I strongly believe in the individual's right of medical choice, the right to accept or decline any medical treatment and the right of informed consent. Forced medical fluoridation is an affront to these rights. Since the judge's ruling in September of 2024, only just a half year ago, over 60 municipalities, counties and indeed entire states in the U.S. have ceased the forced fluoridation of their citizens. Albany needs to stop this forced fluoridation project and safeguard the individual's medical rights and their freedom of choice. Albany, don't become the last municipality in America to actually start forced medical fluoridation on its citizenry, especially when you've already provided over 80 years of clean, safe, fluoride-free water. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do I give this to?
Rick North.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Rick North. I'm from Wellesley, Massachusetts. I'm a former American Cancer Society State Director. I've been researching fluoridation for the past 14 years and I have family and friends in Albany, so this is a very issue very close to my heart. I'd like to compare myths and realities tonight. Every reality I cite is on public record. Two weeks ago, I brought up an email sent to you by the American Dental Association in Chicago, full of myths and falsehoods. The National Toxicology Program, the highest-level review in the country, found that water fluoridated at a concentration of 1.5 milligrams per liter is consistently linked to lower IQs in children, mainly through ingestion by pregnant women and infants. The ADA would have you believe that since 1.5 is twice as high as fluoridated water's concentration of 0.7, there's nothing to worry about. This is yet another myth. You've all heard the phrase, "The dose makes the poison." Don't be fooled by the ADA's conflating the concentration with the dose. The concentration is only part of the equation in IQ loss. The dose, the amount, is the other. Two liters of fluoridated water at 0.7 milligrams per liter give you about the same amount of fluoride as one liter at 1.5, the established hazard level. And thousands of people, including pregnant women, drink two liters of water or more per day. In fact, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists recommends pregnant women drink at least 1.9 liters of water a day, essentially the same as this. But it's more than water. Take, take a typical day's menu. For breakfast, cereals processed with fluoridated water contain even more fluoride. For lunch, tomato soup. If it's processed with fluoridated water, it will also have additional fluoride in addition to mixing it with more fluoridated tap water. For dinner, chicken nuggets. De-boned chicken is one of the highest fluoride-containing foods on the market. For infants consuming pureed chicken, it's even higher. If Albany fluoridates, 50 to 60% of all the fluoride you consume would be from water. 20 to 30% would be from food and drinks processed with fluoridated water. You're being overdosed with fluoride and the dose makes the poison. The federal court's ruling against the EPA declared that fluoridation, quote, "poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children." This is a matter of public record. Mr. Howie, it's also public record that you said you'd withdraw the legislation to fluoridate if the EPA lost the lawsuit in this chamber and on WAMC radio. It lost. I hope what you said is reality and not a myth. Could you tell us where you stand tonight? We'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Reed.
Hello. My name is Carol Reed and I live in the city of Albany. This is my first testimony before the common council. Basically, I agree with everything that has been said or sent to you so far. The matter of forced medication and informed consent, the problems with dosage and different populations, the science and research regarding fluoride and the evolving nature of conventional wisdom. To the latter point, there have been numerous books written on the topic of medical myths and there are many other things like that, things once considered harmless or benign until suddenly they weren't, like DDT, leaded gas and paint, asbestos, along with cyclamates, trans fats, food dyes and so on. It puts me in mind of my all-time favorite bumper sticker, "Don't believe everything you think." It's kind of surprising to learn how long researchers have been quietly studying the negative or unintended consequences of ingesting fluoride. I just saw an article on PubMed about an osteoporosis study from 1998 showing that fluoride hardened the bones of its participants but actually made them more brittle and likelier to break. Various other studies also attest to this or were inconclusive. More research is definitely needed. The chatbot AI Assist states fluoride treatment can increase bone density in osteoporosis patients, but it does not effectively reduce the risk of fractures. In fact, it may lead to abnormal bone structure, potentially increasing fragility. Research into the effects of fluoride on other parts of the body, brain, thyroid, liver, kidneys, the gastrointestinal system, have raised similar alarms. Even the 2010 book, "The Case Against Fluoride" by Paul Connet, references studies implicating fluoride in lowered IQs in children and that book is 15 years old. I realize it's difficult for laypeople to properly assess which scientists and professionals to trust or how to judge and weigh their respective pronouncements, but surely it behooves us to try and have an open mind and an unbiased eye. It seems that some people who have posted anti-fluoridation views on social media have had their messages deleted for the stated offense of spreading so-called misinformation. As a retired librarian who's done a lot of writing, editing and speaking out about book banning and the First Amendment, I even won the New York Library Association's Intellectual Freedom Award in 1991, I'm concerned about both legal censorship and violations of the spirit of the law. Overt censorship of anyone's opinion, especially an opinion that's based in sound science, should never be tolerated. Allowing and airing both sides of a question is the only hope we have of finding out the answer. Thank you for listening.
Natoya Drakes.
All right. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Natoya Drakes and I work for the Social Security Office in Albany and, and I'm an Albany union stewardess as well. I'm here today to speak as a private citizen, so my views presented today are that of my own and it doesn't represent the federal agency. Social Security was created, as we know, in 1935 as a promise to the American people, a promise of dignity in retirement and protection in hard times. Medicare and Medicaid were born from the same vision, to make sure that people could live, age and recover with care and stability. But today that promise is under attack. It's from the inside out too. This administration says it won't touch Social Security, Medicare or Medicaid, but we know and we're living the truth. Staffing has been gutted. Workloads have skyrocketed. The people that we serve, our neighbors, our veterans, our parents, they suffer. Right now, more than 11,000 Americans turn 65 every single day and they're entering a system that's entirely overwhelmed and under-resourced. SSA is buried under a backlog of over 1 million disability claims and wait times are about 220 days on average. And those numbers are climbing and that's just disability claims. Meanwhile, in our offices, we're told there's no budget for overtime, there's no funds for paper, there's no funds for toner, there's no shredding services funds. That's where people's private, secure information is just being held in a box in a room. We're asked to do more with less. While our coworkers leave or retire, the ones who remain, we're burning out. The work is complex too. It takes like three to four years to become fully proficient and even the most seasoned, 25 years plus of employees still encounter cases that they've never seen before. 25 years plus of employees still encounter cases that they've never seen before. But instead of support, we get red taped and last chance emails nudging people to quit. It's a slow, deliberate erosion. We do this work because somewhere out there, there's a child who lost a parent and needs survivor's benefits, a veteran who can't find work because the trauma there they brought home. There's a 30-year-old somewhere with cancer already living in the economy where the cost of living is just outrageous, who needs a reliable income to keep a roof over their head. These aren't hypotheticals, these are actual people. Over 9.7 million veterans receive Social Security benefits today. There are over 74 million receiving Social Security in this world, and ever-decreasing number of federal employees to take care of them. And now the people who make these programs run, the federal employees, they're being asked to pay more into a system that's gonna promise them less. We're being pushed to the brink financially, emotionally, and professionally, and we can't let this happen. We want to show up. We want to do our jobs, and we want to take care of people who need our help. And to do that, we need your help. So we need you to pass the resolution for Social Security, protect Social Security, Medicare, and Medicaid, and protect the workers who make it possible. This is your decision, but by signing this resolution, you're saying that these agencies are vital to the community. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you. Clerk Paul McCreary.
Hello. My name is Blanche Fallon. I was here last year, and I came before the common council to ask for any support from businesses and representatives in our community that can help.
State what city you live in, ma'am.
I live in Albany, New York.
Thank you.
I was here last year. I met Mr. Mateo, who was a worker, water department employee that committed suicide owing my family $139,000. I met him after he came to my home that I was trying to rebuild, and he saw the condition. He said he could help me. So with his faith and with the determination, he said he could do work for my family. I paid him upfront in good faith. He claimed he had businesses that could help me and my family. When he died, my funds died with him. So tonight, I came here asking for support from any common council member who knows businesses or even residents or representatives that can help my family try to do something to our home that is starting to fall apart. There's nothing in this home, just a shell of a house. I was told with the work needed down, I need over $300,000 to finish, to fix, then finish this home. So what I did was made a flyer. I have an event planned for June 14th at the Post, American Legion Post, 1610, at 35 North First Street. It's a one-day event where I'm going to do a bake, tag, raffle, sell, and also a GoFundMe table, that I'm asking businesses to come out. Even if they can't support me, drop off cards, because we have a lot of residents and homeowners in the city of Albany that have been taken advantage of from shady contractors. I see stories constantly in the news of people being arrested for doing work that was unprofessional or either taking the money and leaving the homeowners devastated, and I am one of those devastated homeowners. I paid a contractor half down, and he did a shabby job where it's not even too cold. So at this point, I have no choice but try to raise funds anywhere I can. I also sent my story to the news station, a couple of radio stations. Hopefully, they'll get my information out to the public. I'm trying to raise $2,000 at this point to put exterior door and stairs at this point, because there's no way to get into the building without a really ladder. The houses are just falling apart from age, of wear and tear, and from being poorly put together. So there's a point that it may even be a total loss. I don't know for sure, because I don't have anyone to come in and really tell me what can be saved or what can't be saved at this point. So what I did is made a flyer and the letter stating that I'm looking for support, sponsors, also for people to come out and support my event. I happened to take a sale of 20 items I'm raffling off. I mean, anything is doable. I mean, I'm willing to look for anyone who also has products they want to sell, that they can sell at my event and give a donation towards my fundraiser if possible. At this point, I am not too proud to beg for help. I never did before, but now I do. So here is my story. Again, I'm sorry about the late Mr. Mateo. At one point or another, he seemed to be a well-known representative for the city of Albany, but for whatever reason, he went the other way, and I still don't blame him to this day. I just wish some of the businesses that he knew would step up in his name and sponsor a project in my home, so that one day I can complete this home that I lost in a fire in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Paul McCreary.
Excuse me. June 14th. I have a flyer for everyone here and a letter.
You can hand it to Alyssa here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Laura Faran. Laura Faran. Next one. Jeffrey Rose. Jeffrey Rose.
All right. That's it. That's it for tonight's public comment period. Scene closed. Before we go on approval minutes, Ms. Farrell has a motion that she would like.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to add resolution 385125 to the agenda by majority consent.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes. Now the motion to move it out of order.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to move resolution 385125R out of order and take it forthwith.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution's been taken out of order. Now we'll go to Mr. Robertson, and I apologize, Mr. Robertson, that I had a brain freeze that it was requested to take it out of order earlier, but I had a brain freeze, so.
No worries.
Go ahead, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution 385125R and ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council recognizing and celebrating Jaden Goodby and the work he has done for his community.
Comments on this resolution, Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing a young man who has truly represented the promise and potential of our city, Mr. Jaden Goodby. When I first met Jaden, he wasn't sitting in a classroom, he was knocking on doors in the neighborhood, asking if anyone needed their trash can cleaned. At first, I was going to say no, but then I paused, and I looked at this young man standing there respectfully offering a service, taking initiative, and I thought to myself, this is exactly what we need to see more of. He's thinking about what others overlook. That moment told me everything I needed to know about Jaden. He doesn't see what's in front of him, he sees what's possible. And I must say that after he finished cleaning the trash can, I didn't even want to put trash in it. Jaden is a graduating senior at Green Tech High School, where he has earned the highest honor roll and impressive 12 times. He is completing his time there with a Regent's Diploma with advanced designation with honors. And this fall, he has taken his excellence even further as he heads to one of the top engineering schools in our country, RPI. But Jaden's story isn't about, just about academic success, it's about drive, it's about vision, and it's about service. What started as a snowy day and a simple shovel turned into a youth-owned business called Albany Can Shine. Jaden builds something from the ground up, offering lawn care, snow removal, and outdoor services. This kind of initiative shows his maturity beyond his years. But what impresses me most is his heart for others. Jaden has volunteered to help feed families during the holidays and has raised over $19,000 for the Leukemia and Leukemia Society. Jaden, you remind us that leadership doesn't come with age, it comes with action. And because of young people like you, Albany future shines even brighter. Want to encourage you to keep going, keep growing, and keep shining. The road ahead of you won't always be easy, but your work ethic, your character, and your calling have already set you apart. It is my honor to present resolution 385125R for a vote recognizing and celebrating your achievements, your service, and the light you bring to this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion on this resolution? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I want to say thank you to Councilman Robertson for bringing this resolution, because I heard this story before, and it's an honor to get to meet him in person, but when I look to the left and the right of you and I see who you are connected to, it's really no surprise. And so I just want to say, you know, we're big on recognizing our talent, and, you know, the stuff that you're doing is just making chills come up my arms as I was listening to it. So, you know, our kids in our community needs to hear your story, and I'm glad that Councilman Robertson put this resolution, because this is what it's about. You know, we have some real good, strong hometown talent, and, you know, I love, love when we get a chance to recognize it. So congratulations, young man.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Excuse me, Clark.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Hoey.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Eleven, affirmative.
Resolution passes, and I think we want to present you with a certificate. So Mr. Goodby, come up.
You guys can come over here. You can come here to the issues we want. Okay, everybody get a little bit closer together. Okay, ready? Three, two, one. And then something like this.
Approval of minutes from previous meeting, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the meeting minutes from April 21st, 2025, and ask for their approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. There's no consideration of local laws on today's agenda. Reports of standing committees. Seeing none? Moving on. Now go to considerations of ordinances. Who do we got? I think we have Mr. -- Ms. Farrell, you're going to do Ms. Kimbrough's?
Yes.
Ordinance L.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Kimbrough, I notice ordinance 269124 and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article 2A honorary street namings of the Chapter 323 Streets and Sidewalks of the College of the City of Albany in relation to expanding and clarifying honorary street namings by elected officials.
Discussion on this ordinance. Seeing none? Can the clerk call the roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Hoey.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Ten, affirmative.
We missed the amendment portion of it, so we might have to. Yes, we have to do, it was a pending amendment, there was an amendment to this ordinance. I don't, I don't think we can do it in caucus. I don't know if council members have seen the amendments, pending amendments. Have council members seen any pending amendments for this ordinance? So lines, if you open up your thing, it's honorary street naming, it's portion C, which is adding, who else can sponsor, street approvals, the treasurer and auditor. And/or under B, council members accept, the president of the common council, and common council members accept such honorary streets naming shall be restricted to roots wholly and partially within their own wards. It's under B. Could you repeat that? And under C. Yes. If you look at the ordinance, the amendments were, the president of a common council, under B2, and then B3, common council members accept that such honorary street namings shall be restricted to roots wholly or partially within their own wards. And then the other amendment was C, the following elected officials shall be permitted to be application sponsors of a maximum of one approved honorary street naming per calendar year. That's the treasurer's office and the auditor. Those are the two amendments. So reintroduced as amended, and we can have a discussion on amendments if people wish to go.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice, on behalf of Councilmember Kimbrough, I notice ordinance 269124 as amended, and ask for its passage.
Hold on. There's one motion. So one motion that has to be made first, which is going to be a motion to reconsider the previous vote. So first, we're going to reconsider the previous vote, we're going to say we didn't do that.
Should I withdraw the previous?
No, no. So it's specifically a motion to reconsider the previous vote. You'll move to reconsider it, we'll reconsider that it was voted down, then we'll actually amend it, then you can proceed as normal.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. President. I move to reconsider ordinance 269124.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Not opposed? That motion passes. Now we go on to the amended.
Now this is if that vote to pass, it never happened, we're back before there.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice, on behalf of Councilmember Kimbrough, I notice ordinance 269124 and ask for its amendment. And then I pass it, or?
Yeah, so we take this vote to approve the amendments.
Great. And ask for its amendment.
Any objections to the amendment? Any objections to the amendments? Do you have an objection? Clarification, yes, sir. I will allow it, yes.
Uh, so just for clarification purposes, the inclusion for the city auditor and other position, is there a reason as to why those were added in? That anyone could answer?
I mean.
Politics.
Yeah, that, that request came from the administration.
Politics.
They felt that all citywide electeds should have.
Should have, should have a, be able to name streets after them. Politics.
Okay.
There are injections to these amendments. Seeing none?
Hold on, I, I just got a question about the expiration. What, what, what does that mean? Upon expiration of honorar- honorary street naming, affixation, what?
Where, where is that, Councilmember Johnson?
Uh, it would be in, um, sign it and restriction, it would be, um, letter D. It's the last one.
Yeah, yeah, the honorary street renaming's are only temporary. That's the case under the current legislation as well. They only last for
Yes, this is no amendment.
I don't recall what it is under the current legislation.
Twenty years?
I think Mr. Iceland just said ten years. So, that's just being carried through in the current legislation.
Stop right there. We only go over and over what's amended. That's already been in the law. So, that's something else you have to reconcile with your council member. So, going back, Ms. Pharaoh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I note, on behalf of Councilmember Kimbrough, I notice ordinance twenty six ninety one twenty four and ask for its passage.
Yes, we did.
As amended.
Dovin the question.
Yes. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Article two A honorary street namings of Chapter three twenty-three Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to expanding and clarifying honorary street namings by elected officials.
Discussion on this ordinance. Seeing none, can the clerk call the roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Uh, Conti.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Hoi.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Keegan.
Yes.
Love. Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Nine, any affirmative?
Motion passes. Okay, um, Ms. Pharaoh, I think that's all with ordinances?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the ordinances are, or the rest, yes, the rest of the ordinances are held.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions introduced, Mr. Adams.
Sorry, one second. For Bike History Month?
Bike Month, thirty fifty-one.
Apologize. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Resolution thirty dot fifty-one twenty-two R and ask for its introduction and passing.
Hear the?
Wrong number.
Wrong number, I believe.
Your, your agenda, it's thirty fifty-one twenty-five R.
Oh, that's what you said? Okay, it's, couldn't sound different.
Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council recognizing May twenty twenty-five as Bike Month in the City of Albany.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none? Since you all are co-sign, uh, co-sponsors, this will be a voice vote. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Uh, Mr. Hoi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution thirty-one fifty-one twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council in support of protecting neighborhood social security offices, Medicare, and Medicaid.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Hoi.
Yeah, thank you. We had a speaker up tonight and explaining the, the gist of, of what's going on. Anybody who turns on the TV these days or pick up the newspaper, we see what's going on, that all these, um, social services that have been set up since the Depression under Franklin Roosevelt are slowly being thrown away. And, uh, you know, we're looking to do tax cuts for billionaires, but I won't get into the politics of that. But I will talk about social security. One thing that, when I watch the news and hear people talking about social security, Medicaid, and Medicare, I keep hearing it's an entitlement program. So, it sounds like, you know, we're, we're getting something for nothing from the government. The bottom line, though, is I've been paying into social security for over fifty-one years. Every year, they take out seven point five percent of my salary and seven point five of my employers in order to fund the social security system. This is a system that is so important, especially to our elderly people who didn't have pensions or lost their pensions with the, um, with these banking failures and stock failures in the 401Ks. Companies in the old days used to give you a pension when you worked for them. Actually, I worked for Citicorp many years ago, and I have a pension from them that I never paid into. But they valued me as an employee back then. But what happened is profit becomes more important, and they don't care about the people that, you know, made the companies what they are. And that's what we're facing. This is an important, uh, speaking up right now, that we speak up and say, stop. We need our social security offices. We need more employees to help. We have baby boomers, people my age, retiring. And if you can't be, um, get the answers on a computer, you've got to call in. I was on hold for three hours just to get a, a simple answer. So, I, I, I pleaded with my fellow council members to please pass this. This is a good resolution, um, and I think it will make a difference. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Since you're all co-sponsors, uh, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Continuing on, Ms. Keegan. Oh, you have a proclamation? Okay. News to me. Thank you. Continuing on. Resolution introduced, uh, Ms. Keegan.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to notice Resolution thirty-two fifty-one twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council commemorating the week of May fifth through May ninth as Public Service Recognition Week.
Discussion on this, Ms. Keegan.
Thank you. Like many of you in this room, I spent ten years as a public servant. I traveled all across the state of New York, um, investigating allegations of abuse and neglect involving folks who are being served by our behavioral health system and juvenile justice system. It was difficult work. It was challenging work and oftentimes really traumatic work. And this week is about recognizing all the people that make government work for us. The people who collect our garbage. The folks who work in our clerk's office and process all of our permits and licensing applications. The police officer who's downstairs and is in the front lines if we ever have an active shooter incident here in this building. It is often a thankless job. It is often a challenging job. And it is often a position where people are not always treated well by the public that they try to serve every day. And it is a job in which most people take a lower salary in order to serve you than they can get in the private sector. So, I'm very proud to carry this resolution this evening. Um, and I just want to express how grateful I am to our workforce here in the City of Albany for everything that they do for us and everything that they do for our residents every single day.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Since you're all co-sponsors, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Continuing on resolutions introduced, uh, Ms. Pharaoh for Mr. Kimbrough?
Actually, uh, Mr. President, since Councilmember Hoi worked with Councilmember Kimbrough in this, um, I would love to defer to him to introduce it. Councilmember Hoi.
Oh, Mr. Hoi?
Sure. Thank you, uh, Mr. President. And, uh, I notice Resolution thirty-three fifty-one twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council directing the city clerk to hire Garrett Schaff for program director position.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Hoi.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. We interviewed since October, when Michelle left the position as program director, we interviewed over eight people for this position. And it, it was very difficult to find the right fit for both the council and for the CPRB. We did have a, a candidate that was, um, from Rochester, but he got hired at more money at a, in a different city. So, we lost out on, on him. Then we had Garrett come in, and we were very, very impressed by his qualifications. He was, um, if I remember correctly, in, worked in Atlanta as CPRB. He also was currently in Chicago. We did do a full investigation through the city of his background because we want to make sure that there's no skeletons in the closets. And also, the CPRB did a separate, independent background check. And he came out, um, very clean. And, you know, he's everything that he says he is. He was going to try to make the meeting before we, we approve it. Like I said, he's out in Chicago. He's been trying to find an apartment here in the city. But he will come in as soon as he comes in, you know, gets a place in the city and moves to Albany permanently, he will come in and appear before the council and ask, answer questions. So, I do ask my fellow council members, this is an important position. The CPRB's been at, without a program director since January because the Albany Law School kind of filled in for Michelle between October and January. And, um, our council, uh, staff has been working extra, trying to keep things going. But we don't want to lose public confidence in the CPRB. And I think having a program director in place will ensure that the confidence is there and that we are looking at cases. And there are quite a few cases starting to build up. So, I do ask you all to please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Hoi.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Ten, any affirmative?
Resolution passes. Ms. Zamer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution thirty-two fifty-one twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council recognizing May twenty twenty-five as Jewish Heritage Month.
Thank you. Discussion on this resolution, Ms. Zamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. May first marked the beginning of Jewish Heritage Month in the United States. We celebrate and reflect on the enormous contributions that the Jewish community has made throughout our country, but our impact has been especially strong here in New York State. There are well over two million Jews living in New York State and about thirteen thousand here in Albany. While our history is fraught with oppression and persecution, we have generally found safe haven here in the United States. This is something the Jewish community is acutely aware of and grateful for. As I've mentioned to you before, my grandparents were forced to flee their homes in Europe during World War Two. My grandmother was sixteen and my grandfather was twenty-six. They came from different countries and met in New York City. My grandfather was a doctor, and they decided to go up north to Albany to hang a shingle and open a practice. They moved to six ninety-two North Pearl Street, where my grandfather had his office on the first floor and the family lived upstairs. North Albany welcomed my immigrant grandparents. My grandfather became the doctor for many in the neighborhood, some who would become famous locally, like, and internationally, like Will, uh, William Kennedy. While Jews have made an impact in all aspects of life in the United States, our history has given us a special responsibility to seek justice, equality, and inclusivity in our communities, as we know all too well what happens when we allow extremism and bigotry to flourish. As antisemitism has been on the rise in the United States in the past few years, from college campuses to the streets to our synagogues, it becomes especially important to join hands with our neighbors and speak out against any and all forms of discrimination. This is critically important right now, as the current leaders in our federal government have prioritized rolling back protections and funding for so many marginalized people, especially our LGBTQIA and immigrant communities. What's happening in our federal government cannot be normalized, and the Jewish community stands up loudly against bigotry and hatred. I'm proud to sponsor this resolution with my colleagues, to acknowledge the start of Jewish Heritage Month and the many contributions Jewish Americans have made in Albany and across the country.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Since you're all co-sponsors, this will be another voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution, uh, Mr. Flynn is not here. So, we're gonna, you want to carry his resolution?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Flynn, I notice Resolution thirty-five fifty-one twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Albany Common Council recognizing and celebrating May twenty twenty-five as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Albany.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none? Can the clerk? Mr. Johnson?
I guess I want to say this now, you know, um, we're going to recognize, I will be supporting this, um, uh, resolution, but, and also, I want to call awareness to what's going on in our bus stops throughout the city. I think it's unfortunate. I, I, I don't know who we need to call on, but somebody needs to have a conversation with CDTA and revisit because ever since they made that, those changes to the bus stop, it seems like it's just been, um, negative. And especially in, in, um, in my ward, you know? If other people don't want to speak up for their word, it is my responsibility to speak up for my word. What I'm seeing with my own eyes, not, not just what is reported to me, is, is disgusting. And, uh, I know that others have to be seeing what's going on, um, throughout our, um, city. And for us to do nothing about it is just, um, sad. And I didn't want to, I was planning on speaking about this during miscellaneous, but the fact that we're, um, recognizing that it's mental health, I think that it's fitting that, um, if we're gonna recognize March as mental health, let's put some pressure on people to do something about the mental health that is, um, deteriorating in our city. Thank you.
Ms. Pharaoh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this, different visibility months and days are so incredibly important because they give an opportunity to, to discuss some of these very important issues. Um, one of my Black History Month honorees is a, a social worker, and she very poignantly said that when it comes to mental health, when it comes to physical health, we, there are so many things that supports and pieces where those needs are often addressed. But when it comes to mental health, because it is something that is not always easily seen, it is something where there is a stigma attached, but it can be just as significant as a physical ailment, if not even more so. And we need to recognize that and give people the supports that they need so they aren't in bus stops bothering people or or they're getting the help that they need so they can be productive members of society, or getting what they need to be helpful to their own family or themselves. So, very much appreciate the importance of this resolution and, um, mental health for all of us and for our community.
Thank you. Since you're all co-sponsors on this, another voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to notice Resolution thirty-six dot fifty-one twenty-five R and ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council honoring May twenty twenty-five as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Albany.
Discussion on this resolution. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President, again. Um, here in May, um, as we are celebrating Asian Heritage Month, a time in the City of Albany where we celebrate the rich and diverse contributions of the Asian and Pacific Islander communities. Um, this legislation this month recognizes and honors the history, culture, achievement of individuals of Asian descent who have helped shape our city and nation. I want to thank everyone, um, who have supported this legislation in previous years, and, uh, want to encourage our public to continue to support our, our Asian community and supporting their local businesses and, um, community events. So, uh, thank you for, everyone for supporting this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, since you're all co-sponsors, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Ms. Keegan.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution thirty-seven dot fifty-one dash twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Albany recognizing May first, twenty twenty-five as International Workers' Day.
Discussion on this resolution. Ms. Keegan.
Thank you, Mr. President. International Workers' Day was celebrated on a variety of different wa, days in different countries, uh, throughout the eighteen hundreds. I think it's critical for everyone in this room to remember why it became May first. On May first, eighteen eighty-six, the American Federation of Labor imposed a general strike across the United States in which three hundred and forty thousand workers struck. Police tried to break those strikes, and they shot and killed sixty Ameri, or six American citizens, um, who were striking workers in order to break the strike. And the international labor community was so horrified by this event that they themselves undertook the process of commemorating that event on May first every year. And the background for this work and what people were striking for was in order to have an eight-hour workday. Can you imagine what working conditions were like back then? When the number one drive and need and want throughout the globe was simply to be able to have eight hours of work, eight hours of leisure, and eight hours of rest. And all of these things are at risk as we look at the next several years here in the United States. I, I am deeply concerned for our community and organized labor. But I wanna thank my colleagues for joining me in co-sponsoring this legislation, and I just wanted to note exactly where we came from and how we got to this day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you're all, um, co-sign, co-sponsors, so another voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held. Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution sixteen thirty-two twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council honoring the life and legacy of Winnie Mae Everett and renaming a portion of Sheridan Avenue in her honor.
Discussion on this resolution. Ms. Love.
Uh, the street naming is scheduled for May thirty-first at noon, and I'm just requesting that the DS, DS, the DGAS committee be there along with, uh, uh, Ginny. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Conti.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Zamer.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ten and the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Uh, Ms. Farrell.
The rest, thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the resolutions are held.
Any miscellaneous unfinished business? Mr. Adams and then Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you, everyone. Uh, just wanna again take a moment to speak to my colleagues in regards to our Safe Water Albany group that continues to come in, uh, to provide information. Um, I just wanna thank them this evening for a great presentation, um, just providing visuals, but also, um, again, making a clear, um, stance in regards to people's right to choose, consent, and being forcefully medicated. Again, uh, this is also a very big moral issue, um, that the council seems to, um, stand on. Uh, but again, we want to, again, to continue to try to allow for more opportunities for this group to come in, and again, for more if, information to be provided to residents throughout the City of Albany, so they can be informed as to, um, what is going on with the fluoridation process. Uh, we have requested from the city information and updates in regards to the RFP process as well as the contracts. Um, so I am hoping to hear back from those departments. Um, that way, we can continue to have, um, proper transparency and information during this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, staff has been working really hard to try to get a planning committee going. Uh, many of you have gotten some of different emails and different, uh, opportunities. So, I'm gonna ask, um, again, if staff can send out another email, maybe add the nineteenth before caucus, uh, to see if we can get a meeting in, maybe at five o'clock in the morning. Not in the morning, not, not at five in the clock in the morning. Let me correct that. I wouldn't do that to anybody. Uh, five o'clock instead of five thirty, so that gives us an hour and a half to try to get, um, some of these topics, uh, taken care of, or possibly after the twenty-eighth, uh, caucus. You know, I'm trying to get some of these bills at least heard in May, um, so, uh, members, if, if you could, uh, do what we can to try to get, uh, some of these dates. And again, I am very appreciative to the work staff has done, because, um, I'm not sure if they send the calendar to everybody, but there was a calendar of all of May where they have really tried to get people's dates. So, I appreciate the work done by staff, and I appreciate everybody's patience in getting these emails, uh, to try to see if we can get these meetings on the docket. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I missed my moment earlier, so I'll do it here. Uh, but the Human Resources and Human Rights Committee, uh, will be meeting on Monday, May the twelfth at five thirty P.M. Uh, to discuss expanding the scope and of minority and women-owned and controlled businesses.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.